Monica Duran.
Present.
Tracy Gildner.
Here.
Dick Matthews.
Here.
Scott Ohm is not, he's absent this evening. Steve Tims.
Here.
Amanda Weaver.
Here.
Do you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I move to approve the order of the agenda.
Second.
Call for a vote, please.
And that motion passes unanimously.
I move to approve the minutes of the May 17, 2012 meeting.
Second.
Call for a vote.
And that motion passes with Commissioner Buckman abstaining.
The next item on the agenda is a public forum. Time for any person to speak on any subject not appearing on the agenda. I'll have the staff check to see if anyone has signed up. Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to the case then for the public hearing tonight. Case number Z O A dash 12 dash 03, an ordinance amending the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning group home regulations. Good evening, Commissioners. Ken Johnstone, Community Development Director, pleased to be here tonight. For case number Z O A 12 03, it's a case regarding amendments to Chapter 26 of the zoning code pertaining to group home regulations. Before starting the public hearing, I'd like to do two things. One, notice that, or note that the public record, public notice requirements have been met, and I'll also enter into the record the contents of the case file, the draft ordinance, and the digital presentation that I'm about to go through. First, a little bit of background in terms of the city's regulations in regards to group homes historically and recently. Most recently, we updated the group home regulations in 1996, and I'll speak a little bit to that process momentarily. More recently, in April of this year, we did adopt, our city council approved a moratorium that was at staff recommendation. We had received, at least in part, was the basis for this recommendation, a couple of inquiries for some fairly large group homes in residential districts, and caused us to wonder whether the Planning Commission and City Council would want to take a look at our existing regulations as it pertains to group homes and see if there's any tweaking or adjustments that were appropriate. So the moratorium was approved on April 16th. It does take effect for 90 days, so it expires on July 16th. So we're trying to take the least impact possible in terms of the length of that moratorium and get this in front of the City Council within that July 16th deadline. So we do have a City Council public hearing that's scheduled for June 25th here upcoming next Monday. We did have a study session with City Council to get informal direction on June 4th, and then, of course, tonight, a critical step in the process, the recommendation from the Planning Commission to City Council will be forwarded at the hearing next week. So the existing regulations, by brief summary, we treat group homes in really two ways. Group homes for the elderly and for children are considered a permitted use in all residential zone districts for eight or fewer beds. Over that amount, for nine or over, they're considered a special use, so they go through the special use permit process. The special use permit process, as you are probably aware, begins as an administrative review. If there are objections that are received, or if there are concerns that the Community Development Department has, then that review kicks up into a City Council public hearing. Group homes for protected classes under the existing regulations are considered a permitted use for any size, so without limitation in single-family residential zoning districts, you can apply for and get approval of a group home for a protected class of individuals, and I'll speak to that a little more, of any size, without any additional review. So the policy issue really is, should all group homes, including the protected classes, be treated the same way in the zoning code? As I mentioned, right now, for elderly and for children, we make a threshold of eight and under, nine and over, as a permitted use versus a special use. So that's really the policy question that we framed, at least for this evening, for the Planning Commission to consider. Protected classes of individuals are federally protected handicap populations, and there's federal law, the Federal Fair Housing Act as amended, that speaks to this. It requires that cities not impose additional barriers and make reasonable accommodations for group homes for protected classes in all residential zone districts. So our existing regulations have treated that in a manner of just saying, we treat a group home for a protected class as the same as any single-family home. So no additional regulations in terms of lot size, or number of individuals, or parking regulations, or anything beyond just treating them like a single-family home, subject to setbacks and typical development standards. We did some research, both at a staff level and also at a city attorney level, to see, you know, what's transpired since 1996 in the past 16 years in terms of legislation, in terms of judicial action in regards to group homes. What our city attorney's office has determined is that it's permissible but not required to regulate group homes through zoning. So we can certainly keep the status quo, which is to treat them just like any other single-family home, but it's also possible that we can regulate them further in appropriate ways, again, subject to that reasonable accommodation clause. So it is permissible to impose a limit on the number of residents that can occupy a group home for a protected class in some manner. The research legally that we did indicated that there's case law that supports the threshold of having a limit of some sort, or additional restrictions above the number eight. So that's kind of where we've landed in our ordinance tonight. We did also, as we typically do, do research of other jurisdictions on the front range, and found that a number of those, Denver, Aurora, Lakewood, and others, also use that eight individual threshold as kind of a demarcation of whether it's a permitted use versus some not permitted use, or some additional use review, such as what we're proposing, which would be a special use. So the proposed ordinance, in part, tries to be kind of a simplification of our group home regulations. We're going to define group homes for handicapped as one other class of group homes. We already differentiate within our group home definitions, different types of, like, such as elderly and such as youth, group homes. We're going to, we're proposing to define a group home for the handicap. And then, once defining them, we're really proposing that all group homes be treated the same, so that you have eight or fewer group homes, and those are permitted use in all residential zone districts. And for nine or more, that they're a special use permit in most residential zoning districts. We're also proposing to unify the parking regulations. We have various different parking requirements for group homes based on different definitions. We think that's more complicated than it needs to be. We think we can treat group homes as a class and govern them in one way in regards to parking regulations. We're also proposing to eliminate the cap on caregivers. We think it lets kind of the market prevail. As a practical matter, these are, you know, businesses that need to pay their bills, which will, in our minds, kind of get the appropriate number of caregivers into that group home facility, no more, no less, but not try and micromanage that from a zoning standpoint. We're also proposing to, in our minds, clarify the residential substance abuse clinic regulations. Right now, if you look in the zoning code and the use chart, it's just pretty hard to read in terms of what is allowed, what isn't allowed. What we're proposing is that, basically, the status quo with a little refinement, which is substance abuse clinics, whether it be non-residential or residential, are either allowed as a use by right, or allowed as a special use in commercial zoning districts. I would note that substance abuse clinics, or I should say, group homes that are treating individuals for something like addiction to alcohol or drugs, those are protected class. So as a group home, they would still be allowed to locate in a residential zoning district, just like other, any other group home would be. But in terms of commercial zoning districts, it's really, in our minds, kind of the status quo, just a cleanup of the use chart, so it's a little more simpler to understand, both for staff and for someone who would want to locate one of those facilities within the I think I've probably already spoken to this in terms of the intent of the proposed ordinance. I've handed out a modified motion for Planning Commission to consider. Again, the intent for us was to really separate out the substance abuse clinics from just more typical outpatient counseling clinics and offices. So we'd recommend for your consideration that you consider the motion in front of you, which would just make that even more clear, which is to say, in the definition of outpatient, of counseling clinics and offices, which are permitted uses in commercial districts, add in front of that outpatient, so that it's clear that there's a distinction between the residential, non-residential substance abuse clinics, which are defined elsewhere and listed elsewhere within the use group categories of the zoning code. That's really the extent of my presentation. I'm certainly glad to answer questions, and I would note that we have at least one member of the public here to submit testimony at the public hearing. Thank you very much for that presentation. I will now entertain questions to staff from the Commissioners. Commissioner Duran, any questions for staff?
I have a question. What is the cap on, right now, on caregivers?
You know, I'd actually have to look at the zoning code. I can't recall specifically what the cap is.
Okay.
Good question.
Thank you.
Commissioner Brinkman.
I just found a net in the actual code, in the write-up of the code. I'm sure everybody else is going to find other stuff, but on page five, first paragraph, "family," where it starts actually doing the correction, it says "for" or "five," unrelated, and then it has a five. So you might just want to, where it puts the textual word of four and five.
Put in a numeric four.
Or remove, well, it looks like to be consistent, yeah, so you have to put a numeric four.
Okay.
Okay, I'm done for now. I want to hear Dick's question.
Commissioner Matthews.
Yeah, I'm still a little confused. If you had something like a detox facility in the city, and on any given night, it could be expected to have 20 to 30 people there, but each night, it's a different 20 to 30 people, does that qualify as outpatient, or is that inpatient?
We would consider that having a residential component, but it would be treated the same way regardless. So it would be a special use in C1 and C2, and a permitted use in industrial zone districts. So if someone were to want to locate a facility like that in the city, not allowed in residential districts, potentially allowed in commercial districts, subject to the special use process, and permitted in industrial districts.
Ken, how many group homes are there currently in Wheat Ridge?
I think our attendee in the audience may be better qualified to answer that than our, than me. We don't maintain a registry, per se. They're required to be registered with the state, so I don't have an active inventory of those. Certainly, there are a number of them within the city.
Okay. When you mentioned that you've received some applications for some fairly large group homes, can you quantify fairly large?
I can. We received, not an application, but an inquiry, a preliminary inquiry, for a property off of Wadsworth, on the west side of Wadsworth, near 40th, for a facility that would have had 32 beds.
Additionally, when we talk about the cap on caregivers, my concern might be that if we remove a cap, we might have an impact on traffic, especially in residential areas. Do you have any information on what the typical number of caregivers per eight people is right now? Just so we can get a feel for how many car trips per group home we're getting every day?
Sure. I don't have a good sense. It's not something that we researched with the group home care facility community. Just to reiterate our approach, which was, I certainly appreciate the concern with traffic. I think, you know, we felt if we're going to allow group homes, which we, of course, want to do, under certain situations, that it's more of a market-driven, you know, in terms of the types of populations that they're serving, and the number of staff that they need to serve that population. You know, I don't think we think it's, on any given time of day, more than two, three, four staff. So I think we're not overly concerned with the traffic impacts, and would like to be able to, you know, let that business model and care model function as it wants to function.
Well, I don't disagree that caregiver group probably has a better idea of how many caregivers are needed for a particular population. It's not something we should necessarily try and control. But my concern, in terms of zoning, does come down to, like, impact on the neighborhood in terms of, and traffic would be one of those impacts, so.
And just to follow up, Mr. Buckman, I, again, appreciate the comment. The one way we have tried to regulate it is to say that, you know, parking should be addressed. So the parking approach that we've taken is that they need to meet a single-family home parking requirement, but then also meet a parking requirement for the maximum number of staff on shift at any one time.
Yeah, it's not parking that I'm so interested in. It's more just number of trips through a resident, just specifically when we're talking about within a residential environment. You know, in commercial and industrial areas, a certain amount of traffic's to be expected and anticipated. But when we're talking about residential, that's just a concern that I have. So those are all the questions I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Weaver, any questions? Okay. Commissioner Gildner? Any other additional questions for staff? At this time, we'll open the, I have the public hearing with the citizens. We do have one signed up, Ms. Nancy Snow. If you'd like to state your name and address for the record, please.
This has been missed for a while, but you. Okay. Nancy Snow, 11155 West 40th. And I'd like to take just a moment and explain to you that I worked over 24 years for the Colorado Civil Rights Division. If you have any legal questions about group homes, believe me, I know the answers. We have had complaints, not so much against cities anymore, but homeowners associations particularly, for being very difficult to allow people with disabilities to move into the neighborhood. And I have quite a few things I want to say, but let me make one comment about traffic. I understand why you'd be worried, but most of these homes have far less traffic, because the people in there can't go anywhere. If you have one for development to disabled kids who go to school, then yes, you may have traffic. But remember, a great many of these homes are for seniors, and they are there because they can't take care of themselves, and they're not tooling around in a car. In fact, sad to say, if you go by most of these homes on the weekend, and you would think they would have families visiting them, frankly, it's kind of sad. So I understand, though, you're worried about that, but most of the time, that, believe me or not, that is not an issue. I'm very much against the number eight, and let me give you a little background. This law, the way we have it, I know the "whereas" is in that ordinance make it sound as if the city just has done nothing. But I hope you took a minute to read all that language that's being crossed out. That was an effort to make people with disabilities be a part of the community, to be like a family, because, of course, we've never regulated how many kids you could have in a related family. And it seems to have worked. I hope, when I quit talking, you will ask him how much problem we have had. Now, I understand that somebody did inquire about, he says 32, but I understand it was a piece of property they thought they might divide in half. Am I correct? And put two homes with 16 each. And by the way, it's right next to that property you just rezoned, isn't it? You know what I mean? The people that were going to make a.
It's near there, yes.
Yeah. So I was kind of interested that the staff was all worried about that, when right next to it, on the same street, they were going to allow, basically, a place where customers could come all day. I think it's kind of sad. Wheat Ridge, it is true, has a different ordinance than most cities. I've been very proud of the fact that we're more welcoming of people with disabilities than anyplace else. I can't answer how many homes there are, but when this came up, I knew a few, and I called them. And the ones I called have about 16 each, and I promise you that if they hadn't put a sign up, you would not know they were there. There is, in fact, one in District Four that has almost exactly the same as these people we're inquiring about. Two homes next door to each other with 16 each. If they have a ramp, you might think, oh my, somebody in there can't walk very well. So I think, I get upset when people get so alarmed about these strange people in a residential neighborhood. I don't think, every time anybody's had a hearing, neighbors do get ugly. That is true, very ugly. But after these homes open, everybody seems okay with them. And I think it's been very nice that we have been able to be more accommodating of people with disabilities than other cities. I noticed on the list, for example, you list Lakewood. Believe me, Lakewood has a lot of trouble, because they require hearings, they are nasty. They, I had one of these staff people over there tell me she had just been to the worst meeting she had ever been in her life, the most upsetting. So if you now make it required that after eight people, there's going to be a hearing, you are going to be so sorry. You're going to all want to quit the Planning Commission. I have been on both sides of this. I have spoken to cities about this issue in certain homes. I have also sat where you are, as a city councilwoman, on a group home, and people and neighbors are awful. So I think it would be very nice if somebody there could be brave and suggest a number a lot higher than eight, so you don't have to have a hearing, so people with disabilities think they're welcome. And by the way, I think people, substance abuse clinics are not protected classes. Are they? No? No, they're not.
It's my understanding that people with diagnosed addiction are considered a protected class.
If they're living there. But a clinic, no.
Correct.
So, so that you can regulate clinics, but if somebody's living there, and as a matter of fact, anybody who's currently taking a controlled substance is not disabled under the federal or state fair housing laws. They are also not considered a protected class if they have ever been convicted of manufacturing or selling drugs. So I understand your worry, but most of these homes, most of these homes are for seniors, particularly people with Alzheimer's. And you know, we have the oldest population in the whole metro area. I think we're going to need more homes. Just approve that senior center with 84 units, are they? Where are those people going to go when they can't take care of themselves? So I don't know if you have any, well, let me give you a little history, by the way, because one of the reasons here in Wheat Ridge that there was such a demand for group homes was that the Ridge Home, I realize it's out of the city, but at the time, it was in unincorporated Jefferson County, and that was part of the national movement to get people out of an institution into group homes. And back then, I would be not exactly proud, ashamed of what our city did way back then, which was to make a rule that you couldn't have more than one group home per council district. And we only had six at that time. But then the Fair Housing Act passed, and various other things passed, and the law came in with this language. It says you have to make reasonable accommodation in rules, policies, practices, and services, which was definitely meant by Congress, to mean cities had to bend, wave, whatever you want to call it, their ordinary zoning ordinances, to make an accommodation for people with disabilities. And I just would very much like to see you not go way down to aid and require a hearing. Remember, there's a cost. There's a cost to the city. There's a cost to the group home. The people in it are going to pay that cost, because they're very expensive, these hearings. They're very unfriendly, they're very expensive. It is a big hassle. As I say, I don't know the list, but I, in just a minute, found three different homes that had 16 apiece, and I don't think he would notice, frankly. You have any questions to me? No?
Yeah, can you kind of give a brief summary of how these homes are regulated at the state level? They have inspectors and check credentials?
Well, there are different kinds of homes, and by the way, I do think, I'm not that crazy about the way they do it here. I moved here a long time ago, but I came from California, and there was a more central licensing. Because the group homes for children are different. The group homes, what I call for the people with disabilities, are licensed by the Health Facilities Branch of the Health Department. And by the way, they have to have a letter from the city that they meet the zoning requirements. And they have a lot of rules. How big the bedrooms are, you know, how big the windows are, who is taking care of these people. But that's something that I find very interesting, but is not something usually that is a zoning issue, because somebody already licenses those homes. And there's a place to complain, and I don't know, maybe when I leave, I don't know if we've had any complaints here. There's one in the paper recently about the home up on the corner of 32nd and Kipling. But the other homes we have, I would be surprised. I would say, from what I know of cities in general, homes with teenagers get complaints, and not just people in group homes, just teenagers. But you don't see very many complaints. As I say, I've known a lot of specific situations where the neighbors just were up in arms about a home opening. They were scared of these people. I think the first big case that went to federal court was down in Teller County, and the people testified they were afraid to go out, and there was nothing in that home but six little old ladies who were not out attacking anybody. So I just think it's sad that we've been the most welcoming city, and now we're going to be like everybody else.
Any other questions for Snow? Okay, thank you very much. Additional questions for staff? Follow-up questions for staff?
Yeah, a question for staff. How was the number eight derived? Was that the result of a compromise? Somebody wanted a dozen, and somebody wanted four? And you just split the difference? Or was there any studies or data to back up that number of eight?
There were really, I think, three reasons why the number eight was, is being recommended. Number one, that's how we treat existing group homes for the elderly and for children. We have that demarcation of eight. Number two, when our city attorney's office looked at the case law, there was case law to support kind of a demarcation at the number eight as well, in terms of additional regulations kicking in at that point. And number three. And number three, not that this is science, but we did look to some of our adjacent jurisdictions, as I noted, and many of them make that same demarcation of eight is a permitted use, eight and under, nine and above is either not permitted, or in some cases, it's some additional review process, such as a special use or a conditional use.
Additional questions for staff?
Yeah, I have one.
Gildner, yes?
Is there a reason, I mean, do you get complaints at these group homes, that there's a reason now to change the ordinance? I mean, is there something that's going on that we need to change this ordinance? Or if there's no complaints, why do we want to fix something that's not broke?
That's definitely a great question, and it's really the policy question for council. I think, you know, as a staff, we, when issues come up, we feel compelled to bring those issues before the planning commission and council. And we thought that, you know, when we were entertaining large group home applications, that it was appropriate to put the policy issue in front of our elected and appointed officials. I don't have a case history or a code enforcement log as to how much complaints, if any, that we receive regarding group homes for the disabled. It just, from a land use perspective, seemed to be a good question to ask at this time. And that's why we're really before you with this draft, is, you know, we thought that the potential that you could have an unlimited number of occupants to a group home for a protected class was a policy question that we wanted to get in front of all of you.
Commissioner Weaver?
I just, I think you said this before, but is there any restriction on any of these types of homes, as far as how many there can be in We Ridge?
For a protected class, no. It would be treated just the same as a, as a single-family home. So if you're applying for a building permit or a certificate of occupancy for a group home in a residential zone district for a protected class, there's no limit.
Thank you.
Commissioner Buckman?
When we're talking about number, the number of people as a occupying a particular structure, though, in a residentially zoned area, there are certain square footage requirements that apply for number of people there. Am I correct about that?
There are certain building code requirements-
Yeah.
-that kick in, and those would certainly still be in effect. So if a group home, any set of group home applied for a building permit or for a certificate of occupancy, they'd need to comply with those requirements.
So, and also, because there's a certain restriction on the size, or the amount of square footage that a structure on a residentially zoned lot can occupy in ratio to the free space or clear space, unbuilt upon space, wouldn't that suggest that there's going to already be some, already a sort of a preset limit at some point in terms of the number of people that a particular structure can occupy?
Yes.
Okay. One last question. If we're talking about letting the market, encouraging market forces to drive the number of caregivers, and we already have sort of this built-in, sort of natural, you know, maximum limit that's sort of defined by the lot size, and then the building size within that lot, and then the amount of space for each person within that structure, why not let the market forces also drive the number of people who are living in that particular home? You know, if we don't have, if we don't have a study that says, you know, there's a really good reason why there should only be eight people, and then at the same time, we're saying we should let market forces drive the number of caregivers? My, my question is, was there any, was there any, any reason why we're looking at allowing market forces to control caregiver numbers, which has an impact on traffic, daily traffic, but not necessarily applying that same logic to the number of people there in the, in the home being taken care of?
I think in our minds, from a, from a land use perspective, at some point, if, with an unlimited number of residents in a group home, that it becomes really an institutional land use, and those aren't used by right in residential districts. So I think our, our policy question for you is really trying to align typical land use regulations in terms of institutional land uses with our existing code. So, you know, we did not, as I said, do research in terms of the numbers, per se, but in our mind, from a land use perspective, at some point, if, you know, what the number is, I think, is up for debate, as people have noted, at some point, it becomes really an institutional land use, and not something that I think a typical homeowner in the city would necessarily expect to be permitted use by right next door.
Okay, great. Thanks, Ken.
Additional questions?
I was just curious, as far as the restriction to eight for elderly but not handicapped right now, which trumps? So is it, so using your example of Alzheimer's, are you restricted by your age or your condition?
Yeah, good question. So if someone were to apply for simply a group home for the elderly, and didn't institute a claim that the elderly that they were going to be caring for were a protected class, such as a group of people that were suffering from Alzheimer's, they would be subject to the eight. But if they indicated in their, you know, application materials that they, those were the clientele they were going to be serving, that they were all going to be in that protected class, as in Alzheimer's, they would be exempt from the eight.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions? I have two final questions for staff, then. Can you explain for, or reiterate, the process for a special or conditional use permit?
Yes. The special use permit in residential zone districts starts out as an administrative process. There's a series of nine criteria that an applicant would need to address in terms of making an application for special use and demonstrate that their traffic impacts, other kind of undue impacts that might be associated with the, with the use are being addressed. From there, there's a public notification requirement, there's a public notice period, and during that time period, people can submit objections. If there's a legitimate objection that's received, or if the community development director determines that some of the criteria are not being adequately met, then one or two things happen. We could recommend conditions on the special use permit application to mitigate or address those extraordinary impacts, whatever they may be. If, and from there, the application, if the applicant doesn't wish to address the conditions that we're maybe recommending, or if we believe that there's a legitimate written objection that's put into the record, that's what triggers the city council public hearing. So there would not be any planning commission review of special use permits, it would be an administrative review. If those triggers are met, then a city council public hearing would be scheduled.
And then my final question is, for the existing facilities in the city that are above this number, if they're legal and conforming now, how would they be categorized or classified if, after this, if this were to be adopted?
Right. They'd be considered legally non-conforming, or grandfathered, as we maybe more typically say. The city's regulations, as it pertains to legally non-conforming uses, would allow that they can be maintained, they can stay in place, they can actually expand up to 25 percent. The only, they can be sold, they can be, you know, transferred, it's a, it's a land use right that stays in place. The only caveat to that is if that use were non-conforming based on the number of individuals, and it were abandoned or discontinued for a period of 12 months, then future use of that property would need to be conforming. So if they wanted to reoccupy it after 12 months had lapsed, again, for a group home facility that was more than the eight, under the new framework, if that's adopted, they'd have to go through the process, which would be the special use permit.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for staff? Okay. With that, I'll close the public hearing. And any discussions or motion?
As usual, I just have to make a few comments. I do appreciate former council member Snow coming in to share her knowledge with us this evening. I think Commissioner Buckman had an excellent point on, when we did the mixed-use housing zoning, we eliminated the height and density requirements, because in effect, it was already baked in the cake with all the setback requirements, et cetera. I think that, in effect, the number of people in these group homes is already baked in the cake by the state standards and the actual square footage of the house. And setting additional requirements, I think, is kind of redundant at the city level. With that being said, I'm going to support this, because I don't see a way to remove that with what we've got before us tonight.
Any other discussion or motion? Okay, I will entertain a motion then. The motion can be made in favor, in favor with conditions, or in denial of the request.
Mr. Chair, I would just note that if you're considering a motion to take into consideration the, what I put in front of you this evening, which is a, just a clarification condition in our mind, so if you, if you're so inclined, that would be our recommendation, is to add that condition in your motion.
Thank you for that inclusion there. I would also add that if someone does want to make a motion, the affirmative, Commissioner Brinkman had that one changed there to the, to the text, so. So with that, I'll make another call for another motion.
I'll make a motion. Yeah. Somebody playing the Jeopardy song? I can't quite hear. All right, I'll entertain friendly suggestions here after I read this, because this is kind of off the cuff here. I move to recommend approval of the proposed ordinance, amending various sections of Chapter 26 concerning residential group homes, regulations, and substance abuse clinics with the following condition, conditions. In Section 6 of the ordinance, in the column for uses, the word outpatient be added in front of counseling. And second condition, removal of all language-enforcing requirements specifying the number of residents, for example, where we are talking about eight or nine being the distinctive number.
Second?
We have a first and a second on the floor with a motion, with a motion of approval with two conditions. Any discussion on-
Can you repeat the second condition? Sorry.
Okay, the second condition would be the removal of all language-enforcing requirements specifying the number of residents within all of the various sections of this chapter.
So any, any reference to the number, minimum number or maximum number you're proposing to be removed, is that correct?
Yes, I am, I am in essence proposing that there, that there should be no limit to the number of residents.
If I could ask you a clarifying question?
Sure.
The way we've structured the ordinance and the use group, in the definitions, we've defined various categories of residential group homes, including group homes for the handicapped. So in the use group table now, the way it's structured is that all residential group homes are treated the same. So just clarifying the, I guess, the intention of the motion, if I understand your direction, that would be eliminating the residential group home maximum for all types of group homes, protected classes, as well as adults, elderly, and youth.
Yes, I believe that's my intent, that requirement, that condition. Pardon me.
Did you get a second?
Do you want to just explain kind of your rationale for that?
Yeah, the, well, the rationale is to try and move this forward without just a blanket denial of this proposed ordinance. I think there's some really good intentions here, including imposing off-street parking requirements, including eliminating that distinction between outpatient and residential substance abuse clinics. I think there's a lot of good stuff in here. I think what I'm hung up on is the, the number eight. If there are no studies that say eight's a magic number, if we're talking about letting the market drive the number of people that these homes are employing, but not letting the market and other sort of built-in requirements that are already built into the zoning code and some of the state requirements determining the number of people who are, who are there, then I think we should remove that language. So maybe there's a better way to say that than I said it, and I'd certainly happily withdraw this, withdraw my motion in favor of someone else who can word it more accurately, but that's the intent.
Thank you for that question.
Thank you, you solved my problems, and I intend to support it.
Well, I have a question, then. If you look under Section 10, which only deals with the number of people, eight or less being permitted, nine or more being conditional, that whole section then is moot.
That's correct. So we'd be-
Then-
And we would want to, I guess-
I mean, then it becomes permitted, or are you, sorry?
Let's see, yeah, I guess we'd have to get a little more, we'd probably want to, reflecting on this a little more, and I think we'd want to go through this a little more explicitly, section by section, and really make sure that the intent that we're talking about here is reflected more accurately, because that's a very good point. I, I think the intent would be, in this motion, to make it permitted use, rather than permitted and conditional, based on number.
And that's the same in Section 7, where, same in Section 5? Because it differentiates between eight or nine. One is permitted, one is special, one is permitted, one is special.
Although, in, in Section 5 and 7, there are, there are some other uses that talk about residential group homes for children, which, which aren't affected by the numerical distinction between eight or nine.
Okay, right, but in Section 5, residential group, residential group home for children's removed, that's being struck out, recommended being struck out. I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm just saying-
Yeah.
I'm just, the staff is going to be pulling their hair out, trying to figure out how to implement that when, when there's permitted or special use, or permitted, in the case of Section 10, permitted or conditional use.
Mm-hmm.
I know you're trying to split the baby. This is a Solomon's-
Yeah. Well, would there be perhaps, maybe the solution would be to, to recommend denial of the proposed ordinance with a recommendation to revisit it, considering the removal of the language we're talking about?
You can't pull your-
Well, we can vote on it, and we, well, I'm just saying-
You could vote on it, and then some, if it fails, and somebody comes right behind it, if it fails, then somebody's going to have to do a recommendation of denial, and then we have to vote again. We just can't have it hanging out there.
Yeah, you're right. We have to vote on what I've, on the motion that's in front of us.
And right now, there is a motion and a second on the floor for that.
Mr. Chair?
If I could just add, it would also, my understanding of the intent of Mr. Buckman's motion would be- Mr. Buckman's motion would be amending Section 4, 5, 7, and 10 to basically make one category of residential group homes and make those permitted uses in, in all those districts, so residential, agricultural, commercial, and mixed use.
I think that sounds right.
That's the four different sections of the table.
Additional discussion on the motion? My understanding is, just from, right, staff's under some pressure to get this done, this moratorium's in place, is expiring here fairly soon. Updated ordinance is, is needed, I guess, for council, if they want to go forward. I think the ordinance is fundamentally tied to numbers, so I think by stripping that out, we're basically fundamentally gutting the whole ordinance. My recommendation would be to have, you know, to have staff go back and revisit it entirely, if that was the direction of Planning Commission. Because the ordinance is fundamentally based on numbers, I think there is some logic based on that, based on the history. I will be voting against Commissioner Buckman's request. Any other discussions? All right, I will call for a vote.
Sorry.
You all right there, Ian?
spilled the water over here.
Uh-oh.
See if it still works.
Okay.
Wait a minute. And the motion fails, with Commissioners Matthews and Duran voting in favor.
So we can entertain another motion? Anything anyone would like?
I'll do it.
All right.
Question first. Oh, sorry. Versus doing a denial, do we do a continuance?
You can, you can direct, you can make a motion to direct staff to, I guess, we can either continue or direct staff to rework certain parts of the ordinance and come back.
How's staff feel about that?
About a continuance?
Yeah. Versus, versus outright denial. I mean, denial, you'd go forward to city council, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Continuance would mean that you'd have to come back to us, correct?
Yes, because we wouldn't have a final recommendation from the Planning Commission. City council would have to open the public hearing and presumably continue it based on the lack of a recommendation from the Planning Commission, and then continue it to some date certain, and give any further direction that they would do at that time. In terms of, you know, staff, I guess, reaction to that, you know, I'm not sure how much research is out there in terms of coming up with, if it's the desire of the commission to come up with a better number, what that research would entail. I'm just not sure, I'm not sure what, what data is out there. Again, we, we chose the number eight because it's reflective of our existing ordinance, is supported by the case law, and consistent with other jurisdictions. So I'm not sure where we would go from here in terms of additional research, other than, you know, a real, significant, labor-intensive research of, of group homes in operation to come back with a different number.
Okay, that answers my question. Here we go.
I'd just like to make a further comment on that, that when you walk into a restaurant and it has the occupancy listed, that occupancy is based on the square footage of the restaurant, and not, we don't have an ordinance that says you can only have 10 occupants of a restaurant in Wheat Ridge, it's based on the square footage. Parking requirements are based on square footage. I don't know why that we have to have an absolute number in here, rather than one that's based on square footage like the state regulates.
Okay, so we'll call for a motion?
Yes, here we go. "I recommend denial of the proposed ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 26 concerning residential group home regulations and substance abuse clinics."
Second?
First and second, any discussion on the motion? Call for a vote, please.
Can that motion pass us, with Commissioner Tim's voting opposed? And could I ask who seconded that motion?
I did.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. At this point on the agenda, other items for the commission?
Sure.
Come on up to the microphone. Just come on up to me.
Anne has been here a long time. She has made order out of the most garbled speeches you have ever heard, and I always could count that if she was writing it up, we knew it had really happened. And I think you're going to really miss her, I'm going to miss her.
Well, I'll miss you. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne.
I think on behalf of the entire Planning Commission, Anne, we do greatly appreciate the hard work and time you put in, and we certainly enjoy your smile and attitude and hard work, so absolutely wish you the best.
Well, I'll miss you guys, too, and I would just like to comment something that I'm paid to show up here, and I just really want to commend you guys for putting forth the effort you do and the volunteer time that you spend to better your city. So I don't know that I would do that if I wasn't being...
Thank you.
You make us sound better, Anne.
Thank you. Any staff business?
Just echo those comments for, for Anne. It's more than just this board that she serves, so we, we get an opportunity to interact with her even more than you, and it's certainly been a great experience. There is a reception in her honor on June 26 from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., so encourage you guys to stop by sometime if you can. And just also note that there is a meeting on July 19. We do have two agenda items for that, that meeting.
No meeting on July 5?
That's right.
Any others? Commissioner Business? Commissioner Brinkman?
I move to adjourn.
Second?
Call for a vote, please?
The last vote, Anne.
And I, I messed it up. I didn't clear the board in time, but I'm assuming you're all voting in favor of adjourn.
I think so.